Good morning, everyone. Our line called Order the Creek County Work Session. Today is Wednesday, April the ninth, twenty twenty-five, and it's nine o'clock AM. Start off with public comment. Then in here. Any public comment online? If you are, you'll have to in your chat box. Okay. Be any there, so we'll move into discussion. Start with the first one, first one, Creek County Extension Livestock and Field Program Update. Rebecca and Scott.
Scott Dugan is going to present today. He has some updates for the livestock and field program.
Good morning. I'm gonna stand up. Everybody, I can see Bill now. I put her a little hand out and you can see it on the screen. Oh, that's great, thanks. Just did some highlights, or we did more than than this, but some of the highlights here. Many of you may be familiar with Beef Quality Insurance Certification. It's a voluntary program for ranchers that businesses like McDonald's and Tyson and others are requiring beef cattle certification of feedlot workers, especially some cow calf ranchers are being required to do it if they're selling to certain restaurants that require it or businesses. And it's simply a proof they have to take so many hours of training and pass a test that they're using low-stress cattle handling techniques that they're doing the most humane job possible raising their livestock. And OSU Extension is the main educator in this program. And I've given talks not only here in Creek County and given the training, but in the DOWs, in Fossil, was there about six weeks ago, doing a training there. And Ontario and different places around the state that keeps the rancher certification up to par. And that allows them to sell then to these restaurants. And it's a it's a public service kind of thing where they're we're trying to stay ahead of the head of the game with the pressure that's always on the beef industry to do a bit of a job possible. And this is a voluntary system that works pretty well. And also did fourteen workshops and twenty-four with twelve hundred and seventy-one clients. One of our bigger ones is the Central Oregon Farm School. It's held in conjunction with the Ag Show in Redmond at the Deschutes County Fairgrounds. We offered twelve classes. You could sign up and take three, there was three different blocks of classes you can take. And it's primarily for beginning to intermediate farmers. Answered two hundred and five contacts via email and phone, did seventeen farm visits, and also did the Boots and Roots with the work graders from Creek County. That was a lot of kids coming through with that. But we did it. I had my, if you've been in the office or, and I know all of you have, you've got that big poster outside my office with the beef cuts and you can, there are Velcro stuck on there so you can guess where the steak goes or the hamburger or different places. So we did that. I'm trying to think up another activity form this year when we do it. And then just an example of some of the workshops, unlocking the secrets of, hey, I had fifteen. We have a record at the Cabbie School. I worked in, I do a lot of collaboration with like Tri-County Cattle Women, of course, Creek County Stock Growers, Deschutes Stock Growers, Jefferson County. Guess my territory is the three counties plus Warm Springs. And so we we had a record at the Cabbie School. That was that was in January, held at the Tishara Ranch. That was in Terrebonne, that one. Also did a wolf information training to help explain to ranchers some of the procedures. When wolf depredation has occurred and methods and, you know, something as simple as don't forget to let your, keep your dog in the pickup so it doesn't run around the carcass site and foul up the tracks to take, you know, photographs and different things. And John Williams came and talked about some experiences they've had in Joseph and Enterprise. Of course, that's a hotspot up there. And he was able to provide the information that way. And then another thing that came up was virtual fencing in cattle with all the wildfires this year. A lot burned up hundreds of miles of fence, as many of you are well aware of, throughout central and eastern Oregon. And virtual fencing and the cost of, well, to go back and and restore those fences is going to take years. And I've heard anywhere from twenty-five to thirty thousand a mile to do fencing. So what if we were able to do some virtual fencing with the collars? And you can draw boundaries on your phone and it'll give the cow a little vibration notice that they're stepping outside of the boundary. And then if they continue, it gives them a little light shock and then they come back. And it takes some training to get your cattle accustomed to it. And there's herdsmanship things that are involved with that. But it's a potential technology that we could use. We're still going to have to put the boundary fences back, but maybe a lot of the interior fences that were old and maybe not fencing out a riparian area or different things. You can do all kinds of creative things with these virtual collars. And it really struck a nerve because we had, we did it virtually and we did in-person in Ontario. We chose there because there's where the biggest fires have been is in that country or nearby. And we did it online. We had seventy-two participants in that one. And then, um, see.
But there's a question about the virtual fencing. How do you have to have good internet coverage to do the virtual fencing? Is that a barrier?
It's helpful, but you can't download. Oh, what's the word? Download the boundaries in your phone, I think, because I'm still learning myself. And so it can work with, they put towers out and those can then reach out further so they can, the collars will work. If you're right in a dense forest, you're in the right direction and then no, it's not going to work as well. And that was part of the training was explaining, hey, if you have this kind of a range land, this could be a great tool. If you're in a thick forest, it might not so much.
How many people were trying it?
How many?
Out there, do you know?
I don't know an exact number, I'm afraid. There's a lot of people expressing interest. Isn't it the Teskies?
Yeah, I know Teskies have tried it for at least three, three, four years. And they have Wi-Fi boosters that they put out. But I just wondered if out here in any of the burn areas, if anybody's.
I haven't burned it as yet. Still kind of in that introductory phase. It does cost like twelve thousand dollars for a tower to boost that signal. We're looking at different ways. Gillum County's bought a bunch with their windmill revenue. Creek County's exploring it, something that maybe in the future. There's some assistance through grants or different things with the government among those.
So if it's twelve thousand for a tower, what's it cost? How much fence would twelve thousand buy?
How much virtual fence?
Yeah, how much real fence would you, could you buy for twelve thousand dollars?
Oh, well, let's see. Real fence is twenty, I heard twenty-five to thirty thousand a mile. So that kind of helps.
That's that's quite a savings.
Yeah. Yeah, it is. Good questions. Okay. And then, oh, wrote some articles for the Central Oregonian in the Cattlemen's Magazine. And one thing I forgot to put on there was that I judged the Carcass America Contest for Creek County, close to a hundred steers each year. Blake and Hollow and I worked together. We also do Deschutes and Wheeler and Jefferson Counties also. And then I also helped the USDA rep with testing chickens for salmonella and oh shucks, the other disease just escaped me. But anyway, we do a vertical testing. Yeah. So a lot of collaborative collaborative work with USDA, especially in Warm Springs too, where we do livestock cattle vaccination clinic, horse vaccination clinics. And Friday we're doing, this is the weird part of my job, but we're doing a horse castration clinic that the USDA vet helps. And it's a big training for the OSU School of Veterinary Science. They bring in twelve or fifteen students. And many of them are either have just earned their vet degree or they're going to. And it's an effort to try to curtail the population, wild horse population and wolves. So I hope I didn't run over my time. We doing okay?
Nope, you're doing really good.
Yeah, you're fine.
Other than that, that's, there seems like there's more, but I'll ask any questions. So we stay on, stay on schedule here.
I already asked mine.
So with the federal kind of drying up and stuff, do you anticipate with the virtual fencing that if we didn't have federal drying up, would you think the forestry would have come forth and helped the ranchers? Because really, you're looking at federal ground and federal grazing permits. In an ideal world, would they have come in and been partners in that?
Well, in an ideal world, yes, and they are. They, all indications have been positive with the BLM and the Forest Service for working with ranchers on that. And actually, funding may be coming through the NRCS, Natural Resource Conservation Service, would be the main driver from what I understand, on trying to get some more funding for that.
So Andy's kind of trying to work on that.
Yeah, I haven't spoken with him recently, but it's something that's come up in meetings and been discussed.
Now, because it just seems like they need to be a partner in that because that is kind of their fencing. So, yeah, but BLM has kind of thrown it on the rancher. I know in our case, on our allotment, they're supposed to take care of two-thirds of the fencing. We're supposed to take care of a third. And it has been thrown more and more on us. Yeah, you know, and it's just, yeah. And what do you do? If you're going to use the allotment, you end up doing it more. But in this case, there's no fence. So it seems like they should be a better partner than they are. And that's, that's why I'm kind of asking is, you know, but again, we have a severe funding problem there too.
Well, one thing I really enjoyed about working in Creek County and Centaurian in general is the different groups, NRCS, USDA, the SW, Stow Water Conservation Districts, they're really been great to work with. And it's a nice collaborative approach. Everybody is more willing to help each other out in different areas, depending on where their level of expertise lies.
Thank you, Scott. Thank you very much.
Thank you for having us. If you don't mind, I'm going to hang on a minute about the wolf thing and then we'll.
Okay, sounds good.
Yeah, so the next one is the wolf thing. And we're going to remove it from the agenda and we have some questions about it. We're going to turn it over to an ass to leave. Eric to take a peek at it and we'll put it back on the agenda. We'll have the opportunity to read it.
Well, I think it would be worth maybe Eric and I and Ellie calling and talking with Sunny, the person that does it out of Salem, just to be able to get to the bottom of it quickly. So I'm happy to work with Eric to set up a time to set up that that conversation. Because, you know, I, 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 just like everybody else, I have concerns. But I think there's stuff in there like the, I talked to Ellie this morning, the.
Can we just wait until we bring it up? But Eric can take a look at it and then you can get a hold of the staff and. Hey, go on to the next one. Under Sheriff, Bill Elliott.
There you go.
One second, I'll get it pulled up for you in a second.
Usually give him a keyboard.
I know, I'm still got to get some more attendance.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mine's interesting.
And no, I put you to sleep, but now you're not giving you the same opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, thanks.
Mr. Marsh, can I have a seat anywhere?
Yeah, we want to see crying down.
It is.
Good, good. Okay.
All because of you, right, Bill?
Feeling safer already.
Well, okay. Let's get over here to my. Okay, so March comp stats. March of twenty-five to March twenty-four, we were down in person crimes, twenty-six percent. We were up in property crimes by thirty-two percent. Community crimes or problems, we were down one hundred and twenty-three. We were down substantially in that one. And sex crimes were up thirty percent last month. And mental health was down to one, POH last, last month. And then the arrest for the sheriff's office, again, this is just the sheriff's office arrests, eight felony arrests, thirty-three misdemeanors. One felony juvenile, one felony or one misdemeanor juvenile, and then all others too. So the juvenile felony arrests were down. But the adult felony arrests were up considerably just in our office. So overall, there was an increase of arrests of seventeen percent. Going back to you on the calls, overall, as a grand total, we were down forty-eight percent compared to March of twenty twenty-four. Jail stats, this is all jail, so this includes OSP and Primal Police Department. But we were up in total bookings by nine percent. And then DUIs, twenty-four DUIs were brought into the jail last month. Assaults are twenty-five assaults as opposed to fourteen, so we had a forty-four percent increase in assaults compared to the previous year. Failed reported, failed registered sex offender, those were up considerably. We had four of those last month. Use of force has stayed the same with one use of force last month. Suicide attempts are up because we had one. And that's an actual attempt to do harm to yourself. But suicide watches, we held, I mean, we're up a little bit, but we held pretty steady at four. And calls for service are down. So we handled thirteen hundred and forty-seven calls for service last month, which is a four percent decrease as opposed to the year before. And self-initiated calls for service, seven hundred and fifteen calls, which is down about point two percent. I anticipate with the vacancies that we have, that the self-initiated calls are going to start to fall off. And then in cases written, so this is interesting. So February of twenty twenty-five, we did three hundred and ninety-four cases or reports that month. And we did a hundred and eight last month. That's a big difference. And and I don't, I, there's no explanation. I don't know why. We were down now, we were up by three reports as opposed to the year before. But why was it so high in February and so low in March with generally fever, cabin fever starts coming? And that's generally when we're going to start seeing it. We're going to start seeing an uptick coming as the weather starts to warm up. But that was interesting to me. So those are the stats for this month. I do have a couple of cases that I'd like to talk about. One is we had a, again, the importance of staffing levels and those things. We had a DUI crash last night, came in about ten o'clock, ended up calling some resources in to help cover that. But it was a DUI crash with three kids in the car. One of the kids was injured, from what I hear, quite severe. I don't know the status of the kid as of now, but we ended up writing a search warrant last night to seize the vehicle. And then ended up writing, well, Bend Police Department, because they went to Bend. It was a very convoluted case, a lot of resources involved. But the, we didn't, the crash wasn't reported to us. They went to the hospital in Bend. The Bend Hospital then called Bend Police Department because that's where the jurisdiction they're at. Then they learned that the crash occurred in Creek County. So that's how we got involved and got notified. The guy was completely uncooperative. They ended up after I had warrant for him. And then we ended up writing the warrant for the evidence here in Creek County. And then we have another warrant that we have to write in the future, today or tomorrow, to finish that case up. But detective was in, I think, nine hours of overtime. He went home for three hours and then came back for nine more to help us with the evidence and those things last night. So that was one case. I did have another case, but I could, it slipped them out.
Are you done with at least that? I'm going to take that off of the screen share.
Oh, I remember one last. So and then just some things on the horizon to know. In the next week, we are going to pull one person off of patrol and put them into the jail to help cover the jail. And by doing that, we saved the jail a hundred hours of overtime for the next thirty days because we had a guy go out on, on FTLA and to, it was either pay overtime and and really kind of beat on the team or pull a patrol guy in. And by doing that, what's being reported to me is, is that it saved us a hundred hours of overtime in the jail.
So, thank you. But thank the guy that volunteered to be pulled in too.
So when you do that on patrol to the jail, do they have to have special training to go from one position to the other? How does that work?
So they can't, yes. Yes and no. They don't have, so part of our FTEP process, part of our orientation when we first get hired now is that you do thirty days in the jail. But it's, it's a, just to be familiar with it. They're not certified corrections, so they can't work in there alone. But really what it does and the thought behind it is, is that it keeps us at our staffing minimum to reduce liability in the jail. It's, I will tell you, it's extremely frustrating for the patrol guys. They don't really want to be in there. And then the one of them, I talked to the guy yesterday and his frustration is that he's stuck in there and then after ten PM, when the lights go out and all the inmates go to sleep, there's not a whole lot to do. And then if a call comes out outside, they want to leave and go help that part of it because that's actually the job that they were hired for. But they can't leave because then we drop lower minimums, which puts the county at excessive risk. And so that's the frustrating part for them is, is that there's not a whole lot going on in jail after ten PM most of the time. And then, and then they bring in the uncooperative and then things completely get turned upside down at two AM. But it's, it's reducing liability to the county and having those staffing levels there in the event that something happens. It's just a reduction of liability. But it is, and so for the extra training, it is just familiarizing with that. They're not certified, so they can't be in there. There are certain things that they can't. They're not booking people that has to be a corrections guy. They're just basically, there is a body in reduction of liability. The best we can.
It's kind of tough. It's kind of like they're all lined up in the gate. Buzzard goes off and they want out and they can't get out.
Yes.
They go on the call.
Correct. So but it does, I mean, it is, that is pretty significant. But, you know, and then again, on the flip side of that too, by doing that, we're then, you know, kind of depleting our patrol resources. So that if a call like last night comes out, we're going to pay the overtime anyway because we're going to have to call somebody else in. So. Thirteen hundred calls for services to you.
Thank you, Bill.
All right, thank you, Gina. I'm going to go to DA's office and figure out follow-up for the case from last night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, managers' reports?
No report this morning.
Thank you.
So as far as Commissioner, I see that Stephanie is on. So I would like, as part of my Commissioner's report, to turn to Stephanie and have her give us a little report about public health.
Good morning, Commissioners and everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Perfect.
Okay, great. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Stephanie O'Neill and I'm the Public Health Modernization Manager for the Creek County Health Department. I also supervise both the Prevention and Health Promotion and Emergency Preparedness and Response Teams for the department. And so I'm excited to tell you about what we've got going on. We're proud to be celebrating, excuse me, we're proud to be celebrating National Public Health Week here in Creek County, a time each year that highlights the vital work of public health in building stronger, healthier communities. This week is about more than just events. It's about recognizing the partnership, people and policies that make a difference in everyday lives of our residents. We kicked off last week, or we kicked off our week last Friday with a Chamber Perk, a great opportunity to connect with local businesses and community members. And yesterday, we had a Community Partners Thank You Breakfast to show appreciation for the incredible collaboration and support we receive year round. Coming up this Thursday from one to three PM, we're excited to host our Warm and Fuzzies Event, a cozy feel-good gathering with warm beverages, cookies from Chickie Bella's, and a pet adoption event in partnership with the Humane Society of the Ochocos. It's going to be a great way to highlight the mental and emotional health benefits of companionship and community. And we're also thinking about long-term impact for this week. We're planning a, we're planning to plant wildflowers at Stryker Park to help support our local pollinator population, which has been on the decline. And thanks to the creativity and energy of our youth liaison high school employees, we're working on installing a mini library designed and built by our youth team to encourage literacy, community sharing, and access to health resources. And in addition to all of that, we're using these events and our social media platforms as an opportunity to gather community and partner feedback. We've put together a few key questions to help guide the update of our Fair Health Access Plan. And we would truly appreciate as much input as possible. Your voices help shape the future of health in Creek County. And National Public Health Week has always been a cornerstone for advancing health, fair health access, improving community well-being, and championing policies that protect and promote public health. And we're proud to be a part of that effort here in Creek County and grateful for the support of leaders like you. So.
Stephanie, where would we go for the hugs and mugs and cookies and everything?
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. That is going to be out front of the Health Department from one to three tomorrow.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
For the report.
Okay, appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, the perk was very good. Thank you. And it was very good yesterday morning for breakfast.
Yeah, we enjoyed your breakfast yesterday. That was a lot of fun.
Yeah, thank you all for coming. We really appreciate your support.
Okay, now we have to go get a hug and some cookies.
Did you still remember at the event yesterday that there'll be a giraffe at the, at the puddles and puddles or bubbles?
I, I did hear that there was a possibility that Commissioner Crawford was bringing a giraffe.
Well, I don't know if I had anything to do with it. I was just a member about it.
And who is adopting the giraffe? That's what I'd like to know.
You need to have some tall ceilings.
Does it have a pulse?
Yeah. I heard there's one above you.
Is there one?
There used to be.
Really? Oh, we darn. Thank you, Stephanie, very much.
Thank you.
Okay. All righty, I don't have much other than on Friday, I'm attending a Creek County Visioning Workshop. And it's going to have Steve Waring's going to be there. Jeff Orr from, well, he's a Director of Research, IT, CC Foundation Secretary, Patty Norris, Rebecca Landberg, Brandy Ebner, Casey Kaiser, myself, Susie Christensen, Megan Tuck, and Summers Taylor. So we are going to do some Creek County visioning. I think that's all I have. I think that's all I have.
Um I don't, I got a couple of things, uh I've been working with Will and uh. Is, do you think it's premature to start rolling this out?
No.
Uh I've been working with Will and putting together kind of a county college for citizens of Crete County uh to learn about county government. And Brianna's uh was wonderful enough to allow us to have her help us. To do some of the organizational part of it, but uh we're gonna be trying to roll it out this fall. Probably after school starts, we're right now trying to kind of put together which departments should be together. I think we figured what, six, six weeks?
Hmm, yeah.
Um of different, but you know, make sure that we have like departments that are part of it and. Uh I think I think we've heard from the community that this is something that they would like to see. To learn more about county government, uh I think the sheriffs are gone. But I think they've done a really good job of of doing their aspect of the county, but I think there's a lot of other things in the county. That will be really good for people in our community to understand why we do what we do and the. The ways that we are constrained and where where we can have gray area to help them, so. Uh I'm pretty excited about that. Uh also, uh had the opportunity to testify for the um D E, not D E Q, what is it called?
DMV.
DMV, the DMV bill, uh I think it went pretty well. What's that?
Senate Bill Nine.
Yeah, Senate Bill Nine, uh through that process, I found out that actually forty-eight percent of. Uh Crete County Drivers Tests that we administer, but for people outside of the area. And we were one of the highest in the state, and so it it really is an issue. Um I think, sounds like if you wanted to do one, that is what Suzie was saying.
I I went to get my real I D and there was a lady there that had just taken a written test. And they told her the first available appointment for her driver's test was in August in Redmond. Which is ridiculous, I mean, you know, and she was not, she was a mother and I'm gonna put her maybe twenty-four years old. I mean, she was a, you know, it wasn't like she was a sixteen-year-old kid. Imagine a sixteen-year-old kid who is super eager to get to drive to high school, I mean.
Well, I'm maybe even more concerned about the twenty-four-year-old mother being able to have a license to get her kids around.
Well, yeah, no.
Yeah, but yeah.
I mean, and and is she just gonna drive?
Yeah.
I mean, no, it was, I was shocked at that. Because she would, she had taken a written test and went before me to the county and they told her it would be August and the first place was Redmond. I was, yeah, I was amazed at that.
One of the ideas that they brought up during the conversation was having it moved back to the schools. And provide kids with the ability to, not a hundred percent, but moving a section to the schools where if you went through.
Driver's trainer.
Because right now, if you take driver's training, you do get your license at the end of it if you have a passing grade. But I know from Chloe's doing that in the year here, and it's it's very expensive. And so if they could find a way to use some of those funds to subsidize, I, they were just kind of brainstorming some ideas.
Take you out when you drive, you know how you have, you know how you go in the car?
Yeah, you can, you can hire a private company.
And but, I mean, to do your driver, that that would be your driver's test. You know how you go?
School.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's what I'm saying.
You went and you.
Yeah.
Drove in the car.
Yeah, no, that, and they do have that at Crete County, they don't have that at all schools.
But then you, I still had to go to DMV.
So here, now you do not.
Oh, you could get your license.
License through that process.
Oh, okay.
But I think it's, you know, it's not cheap, it's not cheap.
Okay, it all comes down to money.
Yeah, yeah, and so you know, you need to make sure that there's opportunity for all people in the community, not just.
Yeah.
People that can afford a expensive class.
I was amazed that it was that impacted, I really was. I was glad I didn't have to take it.
Uh one more, on Friday, I had the opportunity to go to uh Ryan and I did, to the Ways and Means. Meeting in Warm Springs and uh had an opportunity to talk about uh the Rural Fire Initiative. Of getting some funding for their equipment as well as uh Fair Funding, which seems to be moving along pretty well. It would be a real boon for our community and all the communities across the state.
Just have one thing to add, since Seth and I have been working on this, um there was a. A vote yesterday in the uh Oregon Senate uh Committee on Natural Resources and Wildfire uh to revoke the wildfire map and it passed. And it passed unanimously, so. Sounds like a new bill will move to the Senate floor now, so that's. Maybe next step in the right direction, what's that?
Maybe next year it'll move or.
But, no, no, I think it's passed the House and now it needs to pass.
But the problem, the prob-.
To the Senate.
The problem is, is the insurance companies have already doomed us, that's that's the real problem there.
Well, I mean, I think that's, we can work on that later, but I think this is a pretty big win for.
Oh, it's a super win.
For for.
For regula- for state regulation.
Yes, it's a super win, I'm not saying it isn't, but the the doom call was already.
It it still needs to be voted on by the full Senate, but the the committee was unanimous and. Saying that the, as far as that original bill, Senate Bill seven sixty-two, the the wildfire risk map. And I think some of the defensible space stuff is, they're trying to pull that stuff.
Good.
Pretty good.
Very good.
Okay, I, just a couple of things, on uh Monday night, the Natural Hazard Minigation Plan was. Had gone through the final public. Look at it on, I guess one, public that was on virtual, nobody showed up, but. All representatives were there if there were any questions, so we've gone through that process. Um they'll take it back and do a final and ask that again a little bit.
Yeah, so just a quick comment on that, so there um, the original contract um had a uh. Final date sometime in May, uh C O I C is not sure how long the process is gonna take for FEMA to review it, so we'll be willing to extend that. But we're, we're pretty much tracking right along with the, with the schedule, which is some outstanding concern regarding FEMA's review. Uh but it's still open for public comment, I think it's all, was it April twenty-first?
Yeah.
For anybody who wants to submit a comment before the document gets more or less finalized for FEMA's review.
That's all I have.
The Commissioners, I do have a great addition.
Yes. So, last week the county approved uh an participating provider agreement with Pacific Source. Uh the county received this late March and approved it early April and um Thursday or Friday last week. We get a message saying that um for lack of a better word, county took too long to approve it. So Pacific Source sent out a new version, Richter eleven is reviewed and the only change is that the effective date instead of being. January one is now April one. Uh he is outside, the board of commissioners approved this new uh amendment. Um it's a little irritating, but. Since you're all here and and that is in fact the only change, I don't think that fits as something that needs to wait another week.
Sure.
So I might suggest a motion uh to approve the updated two thousand twenty-five amendment. To the Pacific Source Community Solutions Participating Provider Agreement.
So moved.
Okay.
Most been made and second to approve the agreement, uh any discussion?
No discussion.
All in favor, say aye.
Oh my god.
Aye. Public comments?
Related or unrelated, I even attended a hearing in the State Capitol. Earlier this week, yeah, my experience was quite different than Seth. And I was really surprised. And disappointed at the lack of care for the people that were there. And the respect for the people, members of the public, that traveled all the way to Salem. And there was a room full of them. And the chair of this committee would not even make eye contact with us. They changed their schedule around and we didn't know what the process was and we sat there for three hours. And had no opportunity at all. What was never gave us any indication of what was happening at all. It was really disappointing.
What bill were you there for?
Three oh seven five and three oh seven six, two thirty four.
It's what's the justice?
And and there was supposed to be, it's an end.
Oh, I'm sure.
They were supposed to be given testimony and they changed it to a workstation. Which did not include these bills. And about an hour and a half into it, then they started taking testimony on unrelated things. But never give any explanation, never said anything, never made a comment and that, and again, the room was full. And the chair knew why we were there, recognized some of it, so again, I was just totally. Unimpressed and. Very disappointed in their lack of respect for the, for the citizens of the state, because the people that were from all over the state. From Southern Oregon to Central Oregon and, you name it.
Well, then please don't take my comments in respect for the state.
No, not, no, I I.
Cause I agree with you completely.
Because your chair was a different person, I'm sure.
I kind of agree with you, Mike, because I was gonna testify for thirty-three, forty-nine and thirty-three fifty, which is what Seth is talking about. And it started out and they said that it started at one, so I sat there. And they went through all these other bills and then it gets to thirty-three, forty-nine and thirty-three fifty. And I had uh registered to testify and they got these people up and they testified. And then they said, well, you know, the rest of you, it's gonna be later. And so then they had random other things kind of come up. And then finally they said, oh yeah, you guys can testify and I didn't feel that. I felt that they kind of gave you your due, but I didn't feel, I guess, heard. So I, I kind of really do agree with you, yes, I got my time. But I don't feel, and it was there and Sarah had sent it in through OLS. So I know that the written part was in through OLS, but I totally, I totally agree with you, Mike, I really do. I don't feel that, I I I think I wasted my time basically saying my, saying it there. I felt that I was basically more heard in written form than I was in speech form, I guess.
Well, we we didn't even get our opportunity, like they said, they would. And then yesterday, I wasn't there yesterday, but they came back into session. And went over all of this other stuff.
Yeah.
Then they took a two-and-a-half-hour break and came back for the testimony that people were wanting to do. And a lot of them didn't come out, I mean, they're just playing games with all this stuff.
Yeah, that's true, I mean, that's not fair to people that have traveled.
And I agree that there should be a time, a- and you should know that time. Because you're traveling and you should, it should be, and it's just like with the thirty-three, forty-nine and that. They should have said at one o'clock, we're going to do this bill. And at one-ten, we're going to, I I totally agree with you so that you know, because I missed another meeting. Because I had no idea that it wasn't gonna be until three o'clock, that they were even getting to the matter. That I'm sitting there waiting for, so I totally agree with you.
They needed to hold an apple to their agenda.
Exactly, exactly.
Schedule for three o'clock when you're all there.
Yeah, I totally agree.
But when three o'clock came and everyone showed up, including the representatives, they went off on a whole bunch of different.
Yeah, I I totally agree.
The transit room tax bill.
Yeah.
They sat on there forever and then they just edited it.
Yeah.
And I was, oh, I'm glad I just wasted two hours of my life.
Well, and the thing is, is that you have other things, you know, especially when you're a Commissioner and you have other meetings. And then now you're prioritizing and you're missing maybe something that you should really get more important to do, I I I.
On one hand, I think I wasted twelve hours of my life.
Yeah.
On the other hand.
And you didn't even get to say what you wanted to say.
No, but I was there. And a lot of other people were there, so there was a lot said without anything being said that makes any sense. So it wasn't a waste of time, but it's, it's really frustrating in the, the way that it's being.
But is it a waste of time, because do they really know why you were there?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
They're pretty good at kicking out people in the crowd.
But then there, are they taking?
Does does Mike look like an anti-gun guy?
No, no, but again. That, when it comes down to it, that testimony was never heard, so therefore, they're dis- they're disrespecting it. And they're saying that it, when they're adding up the numbers, that isn't counting in a way.
I think Mike's just saying it is still worth going there, even if they don't let you talk, because you.
As long as somehow, like, you know, five years.
Yeah. Which is not optimal, I agree that Suzie, that we, it would be better if you should be able, they should be able to.
No, because then they can say thirty people talk in support, otherwise they're really basically ignoring, you know, in my opinion.
There's a fighting game changing rules, so that they have to listen.
Yeah, no. No, it's not right, and I I totally agree with you. That was a very good public comment, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
We're in agreement.
Anybody online? Okay, Seena, uh we are finished during this meeting.
And I.
Wasn't as short as we thought.
That's the guarantee, it's gonna be long, it's gonna be short.
Yeah, they, it's the curse.